Board of Education. For Monday, April 27th, if I could ask everyone to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
All right.
Which stands one nation under God.
In the dissonable with liberty.
Justice. Okay, roll call. Oh, is Caroline?
Yeah, I'm Karen.
Okay, good.
Hello.
Roll call.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Gruddy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody. Our agenda tonight, we will, there are no comments from the public, I understand.
Correct.
We'll have updates from our student school board representatives. We'll have the superintendent's report. We'll approve the consent vote agenda. Hang on a second, I can't seem to move this thing. Which we reviewed earlier in the month. We'll have an update from facilities and finance. Update, I'm sorry, update from program personnel, then an update from facilities and finance. Anything from CEDOL, Karen? Karen, you're probably on mute.
Sorry, just a brief couple of sentences.
Okay, and then Jim, anything from IASB? No? Okay, and that should do it. Alright, so we can move, I think, right away to the student school board representatives. Diane, here, how it's going, guys?
I can start today.
Okay.
Since we weren't able to present at the last board meeting, here's a little bit of what has been happening throughout the past month. World Languages Week was held in March, and we celebrated surrounding the quote "with languages you are at home anywhere." The Chicago Korean Education Center visited our school and presented to world language classes. The Korean consulate also visited during World Language Week. A few weeks ago, some students spoke on a panel at D128 EdX. One panel was about why affinity spaces are helpful tools for both students and teachers. It was very insightful for multiple students to hear perspectives on the topics. Dr. Payman D presented the first BHHS Tech Talk. He helped our students explore their why as they learn about mechanical engineering as a career. On March 3rd, Dare to Empower hosted a lunch and learn with guest speakers from BD that shared their career paths and what led them to the jobs that they have today. Students had the opportunity to ask questions about their journeys and what their day-to-day jobs look like. It was a great way to show female identifying students what their futures could look like in a STEM career. Students will be continuing to work on e-learning for the rest of the school year. While some students enjoy working at their own pace, the general consensus is that in-person learning is much better and more fun. Many teachers are organizing Google meets or Zoom calls in order to try to maintain a more social and collaborative feel that is such an important part of learning. The scratching post and yearbook staff are still continuing to work diligently from home in order to create meaningful tributes during this difficult time. The scratching post is currently putting together the senior issue in which they report on what the graduates are planning on doing next year. The yearbook staff is also dedicating a portion of the yearbook to what students have been keeping busy with while they are at home. Clubs are staying in touch through Zoom meetings, such as the Student Diversity Council, which ran a meeting online to discuss holidays and cultures and how society and schools tend to recognize some holidays over others. The CRC is honoring the class of 2020 on their Instagram page. Seniors can submit a form with their post-secondary plans and what they were involved with at Vernon Hills to be featured on the CRC Instagram. This is a fun way to celebrate our accomplishments virtually. The Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference, which is usually held in Springfield in the beginning of April, unfortunately had to be canceled. However, students are still competing virtually by sending in recorded videos of their speeches or presentations. While it certainly isn't the same as what FBLA members were looking forward to, students are still excited to be able to showcase what they have been working on and have the chance to compete. Spring sports teams are keeping busy with, while practices and competitions remain suspended. Many teams have come together over Google meets to do virtual workouts together or just chat. Teams have also been working to put together senior tributes for our graduating student athletes who will not have senior nights to be recognized. On Saturday, which was originally supposed to be our prom night, BHHS hosted a virtual e-MORP to cheer students up. Highlights included a DJ, pictures of BHHS staff from their proms back in the day, and video messages from celebrities such as Madison Pruitt and Sean Kingston. Seniors are still hopeful for a rescheduled prom and graduation over the summer. Finally, Dr. Gilliam created a touching tribute video for the seniors with the message of "Not Forgotten," in which he painted every senior's name on the wall. The video meant a lot to the seniors, and Dr. G even made it on the news. Following this, many seniors were very inspired to create their own video recognizing the accomplishments of the class of 2020, and they submitted clips of their favorite moments of high school to create a memorable video.
Where is that video gonna be?
It was sent to Dr. Gilliam, and I believe he posted it on Twitter.
Okay.
And the district posted it, too.
Alright, I missed that one. I'll have to look for that one. Thanks. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so with Libertyville, MORP was last Friday, and students found the tribute endearing, thoughtful, and fun. Although students are very sad that we could not be together for prom, it was very nice to know how much LHS cares about us. During the Zoom, many pictures of teachers at their prom were shown, and many teacher videos were shown along with celebrities. There were over 350 junior and seniors who joined, and by the end of the night, there were over 700 shout-outs. Senior Hall, Senior Town Hall updates was, is that we wanted to thank Dr. K for holding multiple Zoom Town Hall halls over the course of the past few weeks. The senior class greatly appreciated the Senior Town Hall and knowing that the school genuinely cares to get student input and on the major end-of-the-year events like prom and graduation is absolutely amazing. The parent Zoom calls was a huge success, and parents as well as students who listened in have stated that it helped them feel more informed about what is happening on with school. For Life of a Wild Cats, we have, the senior task force came up with the idea of Cats Connect. It's a series of Google meets that are held with teachers where students can request to hang out with them. And it begins next week, and we already have so many teachers who are ready to be involved. The task force also had their first Green Dot Action Event of Movie Night Friday. It was on the 17th. It was a double feature movie of Shark Boy and Lava Girl along with Ferris Bueller's Day Off. It was open to all students, teachers, and their families. For theater, we have stage players, we have the Stage Player's Spring Show of Peter and the Starcatcher. They had an opening night get-together to remember the show with leading from the seniors. They all connected and watched what videos we did have and memories we did have before COVID hit. The club continues to have Theater Thursdays each week and connects with all students on a daily through their social media.
Good job.
Some updates with sports. So after school activities were suspended, sports have been finding ways to keep the teams connected. One has been through virtual workouts. The Illinois Bonning Joint Institute alongside LHS's strength and conditioning coordinators Faith and Corey has scheduled regular online workouts that are open to all student athletes who wish to participate. Coaches have been encouraging athletes to keep working out from home, and they have been emphasizing personal accountability over their training. Athletic Director Mr. Woods stated that the coaches can't know for certain if athletes have trained on their own time. The opponents will know when they come back to their respective seasons. The inclusion of this distant training option and bus- sharing mission, and it's exciting to see so many athletes participating in training sessions from home. A group of 160 students from all grades have also signed up to be a part of a student leader group for athletics. The group meets twice a week with Mr. Woods to learn more about the pillars of excellence and some of the components to achieving higher athletic performance. It is a great chance to keep learning more about how they can achieve their personal goals in a healthy way, as well as to connect with each other during social isolation. Seniors have been thinking about senior night, the first of which was canceled the week of March 9. Coaches have been adapting to the situation to find safe ways to still commemorate the years that seniors have put into their sports, such as by going door-to-door to present gifts and reaching out over the phone to express their gratitude, not just to seniors but to all athletes. Some coaches have even been delivering winter sports awards, and the athletics department has been working for days to develop a highlights video and a PowerPoint, which will be shared to continue, which will be shared virtually to continue to celebrate the athletes. On April 30th, there will also be a virtual college spring signing event. Currently, 11 athletes will be signing, and Mr. Woods expressed that it's going to be a great event. There'll be a video that highlights each athlete, including senior photos, action shots, short bios, and messages read by Mr. Woods and their coaches, as well as a photo of an at-home college signing ceremony. We want to extend a huge thank you to the entire athletic department for putting the thought, time, and work in to help our student athletes finish the year in a healthy and memorable way, especially for seniors, as it has become a very exciting moment that many people were a bit disappointed to have taken away. We also have a couple of updates about the senior class specifically, as well as just adoptions to the virtual setup for school. So the senior class has been adapting certain traditions to a virtual format, one of which has been using Instagram for senior traditions. The first of which is the ABC Countdown. The class coordinated a plan to still maintain the tradition online, and they're using Instagram stories to share daily outfits. And an Instagram page reposts all of the photos of the outfits to keep students connected and share the ABC Countdown spirit. Another has been using another Instagram page strictly devoted to posting where students will be after high school as a way to adapt Decision Day t-shirts into an online format. So the posts show where students will be after high school, which college they're going to, and what they're majoring in, if applicable. And another thing that the student body specifically.
Whoop, we lost Kat. Well, why don't we, why don't we continue, and then we'll pick up Kat when she comes back?
Navigate this time. How they can't visit schools to make their decisions. And they have also distributed signs that are just for the senior class that are in the Friends theme. So every senior got one of those signs for their front lines, and they also distributed tumblers that Jessica Lee helped to design to each senior. And so even though that was initially planned to happen on Decision Day, we're happy to see that they were able to adapt and make this happen, while also maintaining social distancing.
Great job.
Okay, so we conducted three surveys through our Instagram to get some feedback from the student body on how e-learning has been going. The questions that we asked were, one, how has your mental health been during this time? Two, do you feel like e-learning has been a helpful experience? And three, what could be improved with e-learning? So for mental health, most people said that it has been kind of okay. Things haven't been great, but many students are finding new and creative ways to connect with each other, from watching Netflix with friends, Google Chrome extensions, and to playing card games online. For e-learning, 83% of the 96 students surveyed said that they have been dissatisfied with some aspects of it. And so when asked about what could be improved, nearly every single response included the idea of less busy work. Many students say that they have been, they feel like they have been given a lot of assignments that don't include the actual feeling of teaching that you get when you're in person. So oftentimes, there will be a worksheet assigned along with an answer key, but many say that this process is not really helpful to understanding the actual work. So a huge portion of the responses also included requests for more Google Hangouts. Oftentimes, many Google Hangouts overlap with other classes, so it would be helpful if teachers could maybe find a way to coordinate it so that they don't, that you don't have to choose between two classes. However, many students think that it would be, yeah, so many students think it would be helpful for teachers to either hold a Google Hangout or record videos of themselves in the style of a lecture, maybe explaining different problems or concepts, instead of just like a general, open, asking questions type of video. And something that a lot of teachers have been doing that students have found really, really beneficial is that they're hosting two Google Hangouts a week. So there will be one where the teacher walks through the work, or like talks through the homework or what they've been doing that week, and then another one that's a general open office hours types for student questions. Overall, students deeply appreciate the effort that the faculty is putting into continuing our education during such a difficult time, and they truly value the ability that they have here to express their thoughts and concerns. And we want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity and for all the work that they have done. Beyond e-learning, the senior class has been doing some incredible things to stay connected with the school. So we want to give a shout-out to seniors Ally DeFranco, Maggie Hutchins, May Bratton, and Claire Salami. Because of them, a lot of students are able to send in videos and photos, and they put together a thank you video to all of our teachers. So we're again so grateful for all that they've done. And although we really miss our friends, we've been doing our best to adapt and to make the most of what we have.
Awesome.
Great, good job.
Yeah, great job. Alright, is that everybody? Yep. Okay, I have one question because we haven't had lunch in a long time. What is the latest on next year for each of you guys?
I'm studying finance at Indiana University, and I'm a direct admit to the Kelly School of Business at Indiana.
Awesome.
I'll be at the Ross School of Business studying marketing at the University of Michigan.
Oh, great job. Yep. I know a good hospital there, if you ever need it.
I will be at Lake Forest College studying psychology and sociology with a minor in technical theater.
Wonderful.
Jessica? Or Kat? No, go ahead, Kat.
I'm studying government at Georgetown.
Great place to do that.
And I'll be studying government and environmental studies at Dartmouth.
Awesome.
Wow.
Wow, that's everybody, right? Well, congratulations to all of you guys, and I gotta, I gotta tell you, I'm sure I speak on behalf of everybody, but I would just encourage any of the other board members who want to speak up, please do. I can't tell you how impressed we've been with the way all of you guys have adapted to, I mean, unprecedented is really not a big enough word, I don't think, for what's going on here, but these unprecedented circumstances. I mean, we're so proud of you for what you've done. Your willingness to just adapt and hang in there and, you know, give up everything you've done, it's just been real inspiring to see how you guys have done that. So thanks for everything you've done. Obviously, thanks to your teachers and the administration for everything they've done to try to pull it together. But you guys are taking with you some very unique experiences that I think none of us would have predicted, but I think they've got you even better prepared than you had planned for what you're in for next, because if you can get through this, I'm pretty confident you can get through anything. So congratulations on everything you're doing. It's been real inspiring to, I think, all of us.
Thank you.
I agree, and I just want to say, all of those schools are so lucky to have each and every one of you.
Alright, anybody else there?
I could just add one thing to Dr. Gruddy that I think I know Dr. Gilliam agrees with is that when these kids, represented by these board reps, but all of our students, rather than be focused on all of their losses, there's definitely been pain and frustration about that, but they have just completely turned into ways for them to care for each other and ways for them to say thank you to their teachers and the staff. It's really a tremendous testament to their character and their heart and their spirit as a student body. These young women are perfect examples of it, but they are represented by hundreds of other kids back at Vernon Hills and Libertyville who made the best out of this situation and used it as a chance to come together and look for ways to give gratitude and to help their community. So it's been awesome as principals to watch it happen.
Yeah, and I concur. My comments really are directed to everybody, all the students, because I just think it's just been incredibly impressive, because I know I've talked to some of my neighbors and some of the kids around it. You know, I can't say enough about it. I think you guys are just doing a phenomenal job.
Congratulations to all of you. I hope you all have seamless entry, actually physically going to school in the fall. That's what we'll hope for for you all, and good luck to you all.
Thank you.
Will we see you at the May board meeting?
Should.
Yeah, we should still, right? We'll still make that, right?
Yeah, that's usually where we do the crossover.
Right, that's why I was asking. Okay, any other comments? Alright, then I'll just, actually, on a related topic here, under other, if I'm not mistaken, the school board rep interviews for next year are Wednesday at both schools, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Casey and Karen, the last email I saw from Carol was asking for clarification on your availability.
I think we're set. I'm set for LHS.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm set for Vernon Hills.
Okay, good. So we'll have you two guys do that. I will see if I can call in for someone but as well. Perfect, thank you. Any, how many candidates do we have? John or Tom, can you respond?
Vernon Hills has 10 candidates, so we got a long day.
Libertyville has 10 candidates, so we will also have a long day.
Okay.
Yeah, we're excited. We actually had more candidates than that, but many of them were a couple freshmen and some sophomores. So we've just decided to focus on our rising seniors for next year, and we have 10 of those.
Okay, great. Oh, that's exciting.
Tom, how long, what, how long are the blocks of interviews that you have?
We're doing three-hour interviews with each, so it's about 30 hours, so. Now, we're.
Alright, I'm helping out, I'm helping out.
I'm out.
We're 15 minutes, so we're gonna be very efficient, and we're preparing all the candidates that, you know, just kind of like, we're gonna do introductions beforehand in a document we send them, and 15-minute interviews with a five-minute in-between.
Okay, and we'll get lunch curbside?
Yeah. Were you thinking the same thing, John?
Yeah, we're 20-minute interviews with 10 in-between, so we're at a half an hour. We could probably shorten it down a little bit, but.
Okay, it's always a fun process. And big shoes to fill this year, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, sorry, Dr. Gruddy. I may be suddenly disappearing because the lights are all flickering in my neighborhood and stuff, so if I then.
Oh, sure. That was a good plan, Tom. Why didn't we think?
Yeah, me too. Mine, too.
This is one of the challenges of e-learning.
No, those are called LEDs. That's why they're flickering. Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
Alright, next up Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lee.
Okay, even though we are closed for in-person school and learning, we still have lots of good news to report, to follow up on the girls' earlier report. Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools once again earned honors as Best High Schools in the U.S. News and World Report's Best High Schools 2020 Ranking, released on April 21st. The U.S. News Best High Schools rankings include data on more than 24,000 public high schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. The rankings include all public high schools, as well as selective enrollment in magnet high schools. Schools are ranked on six factors based on their performance on state assessments and how well they prepare students for college. Once again, both District 128 high schools were ranked in the top 1.5% of all U.S. public high schools. Libertyville High School received a ranking of seventh in Illinois, 289th nationally, and was ranked 163rd for STEM. Vernon Hills High School received a ranking of 15th in Illinois and 349th nationally. And I will just remind the board and the community again that in that top 10 is normally five to sixth Chicago selective enrollment schools. So when you factor those out, both of our schools are actually even higher. So congratulations to Tom and John, and both high schools, and everybody that's working with them, and to the board as well. The following BHHS students received the April Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. Miguel Contreras, Sarah Faber, Benjamin Holly, Nicole Herrera, Hannah Merrick, Shereen Mitchell, Megan Rakers, Cecilia Schumacher, Tyler Stevenson, and Morgan Udevans. The Virtual 27th Annual Midwest Media Educators Association High School Video Festival was held on April 24th. Wildcat Productions received first and second place in live event coverage sports, and VH Media received fourth place in comedic narrative and third place in music video. Congratulations to our students and to media advisors Dan Trupkow at LHS and Sandy Martin at BHHS. LHS chemistry teacher Sheri Rooks was named Outreach Volunteer of the Year by the Chicago Section of the American Chemistry Society. The awards recognize the immeasurable efforts made by ACS local section volunteers who conduct outreach and teach the public about chemistry. Rooks serves as co-chair of the High School Education Committee within the Chicago Section of ACS. This year, she served as a primary organizer of their National Chemistry Week activities and created the grandest NCW event witnessed in recent years. Additionally, last fall, she was elected chair-elect for the Chicago Section of ACS. Her year as chair runs January 2020 through December 2021. She is currently the Community Activities Director and the Education Outreach Division Chair. It is believed that she is the first high school or K-12 educator to become the chair-elect for the organization in the Chicago area. The Chicago Section has over 4,400 members across the area who are mainly industry and college academia members. So congratulations to Sheri. Yeah, that is a big deal. While the on-site Local Chemistry Olympiad test was unable to be held this year, the local section decided to participate in the online version of the local exam on April 19th. This was the first round of testing process to determine the high school students who will represent the United States of America in this summer's International Chemistry Olympiad. More than 190 students were nominated for the exam from 44 schools in the Chicago area, and 104 students ultimately took the 6D multiple-choice question test online to qualify for the national exam. LHS sophomore Nikhil Patel is one of only 19 area students to advance to the first round of the national exam, which was held on April 26th. LHS chemistry teacher Sheri Rooks noted that in the past 11 years, Nikhil has been only the fourth student from LHS to advance to the exam. LHS senior Karen Tarman has been named a recipient of the Outstanding Young Women in Chemistry Award from Iota Sigma Pi. The award represented, presented to 46 female high school students who show academic achievement in chemistry helps promote interest in chemistry among young women. The award includes an official certificate issued by Iota Sigma Pi and recognition in the Ioden, the national publication of the society. Karen was nominated for this honor by LHS chemistry teacher Sheri Rooks. BHHS juniors Anjali Perande and Xander Schwartz were chosen to top leadership positions in the Midwest Region Junior State of America in contested elections. Anjali was elected governor and Xander lieutenant governor. No one in recent memory can recall these positions being filled by students from the same school. JSA is one of the nation's largest student-led organization, which promotes student leadership and engagement in politics and community outreach through civil debate and activism. Six D128 student artists were selected from 450 entries from all over northern Illinois and Chicago to be part of the 2020 Perspectives Student Photography Show. Students selected are from BHHS, Chata Bosco, Stephanie Chang, Jocelyn Medina, and from LHS, Rachel Bond, Matthew Bombs, and Connor Pasea. The LHS Wind Ensemble was accepted to the University of Illinois Superstate Concert Band Festival. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, U of I will be unable to hold the on-site portion of the festival this year. Although the festival is unable to take place, we want to celebrate our students on their acceptance for their outstanding recognition. And on April 1st, the BHHS Art Department received a video of the Memory Project Portrait Delivery to Malaysian Children. Over 5,000 portraits, including those created by BHHS students, were flown to Malaysia with members of the nonprofit team, delivering them before borders were closed and the quarantine began. In building this international connection through visual art, BHHS students helped fulfill part of the dairy mission of District 128. So still lots of things going on, and again, it underscores that students and organizations are finding a way to continue to connect, participate, and even compete virtually during this time of crisis. So congratulations to everyone. And next on the Superintendent's Report is COVID-19-related update. There are no major updates from our last meeting two weeks ago, except for the fact that the governor extended the in-person school closing until the end. uh, except for the fact that the governor extended, um, the in-person school closing until the end of school years this year. Uh, as you know from a message shared with you that we sent, uh, to parents last week, uh, our underlying operating philosophy is still that if we can provide any normalcy for our students, particularly our seniors, before they go off to college or their other post-secondary pursuits after high school, uh, we're gonna be open to those things and we're gonna try and make it happen. Um, so John and Tom are both working with, uh, their staffs and their communities on, um, either rescheduling prom or combined senior events. Uh, both schools have multiple dates for, uh, potential graduations, uh, as late as, uh, toward the end of July. Uh, in the event that, uh, we peak here in Illinois and over the course of the next month and a half or two months, we're able to open up again, uh, then we want to try and make some of those, uh, things happen. In addition, in athletics, uh, both the conferences, the Central Suburban League, which Vernon Hills is in, and the North Suburban Conference, which Libertyville is in, have taken similar positions in, in that they understand that the IHSA needed to cancel spring sports and the state contests. Uh, but, um, they're, um, also open, uh, to individual schools within the conference, um, conducting some games and contests, uh, later in the summer, if, again, conditions allow that to happen. Uh, the IHSA has affirmed again today, uh, that they are amenable to that, uh, possibility, and that falls under our operating, uh, philosophy again, that, you know, if we can provide the kids some opportunities to compete uh, this summer before they go off to college, then, um, you know, we're gonna be open to that. So, um, I shared some information, uh, with the board last night that actually Bryant, um, you know, picked up on the news media over the weekend that the governor, uh, he had, part of his statement on Sunday had encouraged, uh, schools to get ready to do, uh, e-learning, uh, in the event that, um, you know, we had to start school that way, uh, next year. Um, we are preparing to open school in the fall, uh, and if we need to make some adjustments, uh, in order to do that, or modifications, we'll certainly, you know, stay within whatever parameters, uh, that the, um, state sets up, uh, if that's, um, needed. Additionally, we will continue to work on, uh, planning, um, e-learning if we have to go down, uh, that path. But that, uh, of course, would be our second, uh, choice for sure. Uh, but we will make sure that we plan for that contingency. Uh, we thought it was interesting that the governor made that statement on a Sunday, when he usually talks about, um, schools during, um, the week. That created, uh, as you might imagine, uh, a lot of stir uh, among educators around the state when they're kind of hanging on the governor's every word, uh, and trying to inference, uh, what he might be, um, saying. So, uh, as we've gone back and looked at that again, uh, he clearly was not saying that we're going to be going to e-learning. I think he was strongly encouraging schools to, uh, get ready to do that if we needed to go down, um, that path. Uh, if we had our druthers, we would have waited, uh, we would have, um, asked the governor to probably wait a bit more, uh, before he added that to part of his conversation because we have a long way to go yet. Uh, but it, it, it is what it is, and we will, uh, be prepared for both of those contingencies once we see what unfolds before us and where we're at, uh, as we get closer to opening up school. So, any questions from anyone on COVID-19 right now related?
Nope, not for me.
Okay. Capital Projects update, so we'll turn it over to, uh, Dan and Mark. Oh, Brian, I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
I don't know how long we wanted to keep our student board reps here, or?
Oh, yeah. For sure.
You're free to stay or go as they please.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian. Capital Projects update, I'll turn it over to Dan and Mark.
Okay.
Mark, go ahead.
Well, I started Libertyville High School. We did a walkthrough at Libertyville High School a couple of weeks ago. We're working on punch list items. Our staff has started, uh, cleaning, uh, the old locker rooms and other areas. And we will, uh, move through that process. We're waiting on some materials, padding for the wall, curtain modifications, divider curtain, um, and stair treads. Uh, but basically, we're doing touch-up paint and, and cleaning at this point. Um, we're very close to, uh, uh, coming to completion, um, but we will be, uh, working on the punch list items and, uh, hopefully here in the next month, uh, we can get the board out, uh, the ROE out for a final inspection. At Vernon Hills, uh, Gilbane has revised the schedule. We moved to Plan B, uh, that school's gonna be out. The major, major point there is the cafeteria, uh, expansion. So Jerry and his staff have been working, um, with Bina on her supplies and stuff that we need to get stored and get out of the way. Keep her kitchen functioning so she can provide lunches, uh, for the families in need. Um, and we will be starting demo here pretty soon. Um, I'm working on trying to find a company, uh, to purchase our, uh, kitchen equipment that we are, uh, gonna dispose of, uh, try to do resale, but, uh, I haven't got any response yet. They're an essential business, so, um, we'll put stuff aside and then we'll work towards, um, resale of, of those items. So moving forward there, uh, curtain wall, so some of the windows in the, in the teacher expansion area, that curtain wall's been installed. We've been fighting the weather a little bit, uh, a little too chilly to put, um, you know, sometimes in the morning that, to get some paper barrier on the walls, uh, because of the block has to be a minimum forty degrees. But as the weather keeps changing, uh, and we get warmer, um, things are gonna, uh, start moving, uh, pretty rapidly as far as masonry goes. MEP is still going on, um, throughout the site. They started, uh, worked this week, um, be starting on the, um, the new gym. Uh, they're gonna get all the materials up on the roof and, and start getting the roof down so we get, uh, our full load on the roof so they can finish the masonry underneath, uh, the trust joy. And that's pretty much it for, uh, onsite. We're moving forward and we'll be working to keep on schedule, uh, for opening a school. Uh, it's helping us out in the cafeteria area tremendously to get somebody's decent.
Good job, Mark.
Any questions for Mark?
No, good job.
Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report is the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one committee, committee and board meeting schedule. Carol's worked through the schedule and we've done corresponding dates to our traditional meetings. So, um, I would ask for a recommendation to, uh, pass that. If we need to adjust that at some point during the year, of course, we could come back and do, uh, we can amend that. But, uh, we would ask you tonight to, um, propose that and then, uh, vote on that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed, um, committee and board meeting schedules?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, proposed two, twenty, twenty-one committee and board meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Yeah, I don't know why I was muted. Sorry about that. Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Our motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the Superintendent's Report tonight is FOIA requests. And we had four, uh, FOIA requests. And as required, I'll read those into the record at this point. Uh, we received a FOIA request on, uh, two thousand, uh, two twenty-seven, two thousand twenty with a response deadline of three-six-two thousand twenty from Vince Espinoza, uh, from the FOIA desk at, uh, in Rolling Meadows. The information, information requested electronic records, preferably not PDFs such as CVC, CSV, Excel, et cetera, of the following copies of high school grading scales, i.e. eight equals ninety to one hundred, et cetera, for all, uh, district high schools. Follow-up was done by Bryant. Uh, was fulfilled on two twenty-eight, two thousand twenty, and, uh, the time spent was minimal. Uh, we had a commercial FOIA request received on two twenty-six, two thousand twenty with a response deadline of three twenty-six to two thousand twenty. The requester was Liat Sagal from Yami Vending Incorporated. Requested current vending and office copy contracts and most recent RFP documents pertaining to the same services. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley. Request, uh, fulfillment and response date, um, was sent on three nineteen, two thousand twenty. Time spent again minimal. Uh, FOIA request received on April fifteen, two thousand twenty, response deadline, um, four twenty-two, two thousand twenty. Requesters Seamus Quinn, uh, construction analyst for Lake and McHenry Counties, Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. Information requested the following information regarding the Vernon Hills High School parking lot. Work bid release, four bid out for two, two thousand twenty. Uh, please provide the bid tabulations and engineer's estimates. Please advise if the projects have been awarded, to whom they've been awarded, the start date and estimated end date. If they have not been awarded, advise when they will be awarded. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley. Uh, request fulfillment and response sent on April seventeen, two thousand twenty. Time spent minimal. Uh, last request, uh, this month, uh, commercial FOIA request received four twenty-three, two thousand twenty. Response deadline five twenty-two, two thousand twenty. Requester Gus Gilbertson from Gilco Scaffolding Company LLC. Uh, information requested prime contract for Libertyville High School renovations. STR project number one eight zero seven nine, payment and performance bond copies. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley, uh, request fulfillment and response sent on April twenty-four, two thousand twenty. Uh, time spent again, uh, was minimal. So, uh, thanks to Bryant and to Dan for, uh, their work on the FOIAs. And Pat, only one, uh, quick thing under, under tonight. Uh, I just, again, want to thank, um, the board for its support of the, um, district leadership team, which includes Tom, Tom and John. Um, the work of the building leadership teams, the teachers and the support staff, uh, as we work and continue to attempt to meet, uh, the needs of our students under very difficult circumstances. Uh, it certainly is a team effort and it certainly is challenging. Uh, we'll continue to do our best, um, through the end of the school year as we, uh, prepare for the opening of school next year as well. But we want to thank everyone, uh, for their collective work. We appreciate the feedback from the students. And, uh, we will certainly, uh, use that feedback, uh, to get better at what we do, uh, moving forward. And just remind the public one more time that remote and e-learning was never designed, um, to be, uh, an extended process. So this is one that we're creating as we go. Uh, and we will continue to get better, uh, at it as we, uh, do it. And then, uh, one final shout-out to our union, uh, when the governor extended, um, the, um, closing of schools through the end of the year, in-person school through the end of the years. Again, um, you know, we need to work with our teachers in that process and, and impact bargaining process. Dennis Duffy and the union has been great to work with, uh, in that process, and they were again, uh, when the governor made the, uh, extended school closing announcement. So, um, much thanks to Dennis and the union as well. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report, Pat.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, next, the consent vote agenda is listed. All of these items were reviewed, uh, two weeks ago when we met as committees. Um, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
I motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Uh, next, program and personnel. Chairperson Batson.
Okay, uh, we have a couple items here. Board policy first reading. We have a, a list of board policies here. We don't have to, make it, have any motion on this. It's here for, uh, reference, so this will be the first reading for these one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, policies. We'll come back to those next month.
Uh, we have. Just a real quick point of reference on these. We went over these in the PMP from March, and then they were supposed to be first reading in the March Board Meeting, but we took them off to condense our March Board Meeting. And so now this is the first reading at a board meeting. So just, it seems like a lag. Yes, there was a lag. I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed real quick.
Yeah, but we went, yeah, we, you're right, and we went over these in some detail, so, uh, more, uh, more to come on those next month. Uh, we do have a item B, Employment of Employees. Uh, there's a list here in front, for your review. Can we have a motion, please, to, uh, accept this? Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing done. Can we have a roll call, please?
Groody.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Jim, I, Jim, I just want to point out one thing here that, uh, the first administrative retiree, Lynn Benson, was a student in my first year of teaching at Thornton Township High School. So if you think I'm feeling old right now, I mean, I already know I am, but if you think I'm feeling old, I'm feeling really old. Because, because she's gonna retire, so.
That does put things into perspective, doesn't it?
It sure does.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, that concludes. Pretty cool for the kids, too, that Bill Spagnuero is the bowling head coach.
Yeah, Bill's phenomenal.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that concludes, uh, program and personnel.
Okay, that was short. Uh, facilities and finance, Chairperson Huber.
All right, we have, uh, items that we've also talked about at our committee meeting, but I'm going to turn it over to Mark and Dan if they want to run us through. The first one being carpet replacement. I believe the bid tackle was included. Were there any questions on that for Mark and Dan?
Nope.
Mark, anything to add there? If not, we'll.
Nope, the, the pricing is, uh, done through our Sourcewell contract. Uh, for two projects at Vernon Hills High School, lower level, uh, hallway and then, uh, front foyer stairway as well as the landing outside the auditorium, common area.
Okay.
Total, total cost, um, for two projects, sixty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
This is for the Vernon Hills?
Two thousand twenty summer carpet replacement.
Yeah, it's in two separate installments, right? So, so you want us to approve them two separately or just the total as, uh, presented by you? What would, Dan, what do you want?
You can just do one.
One, okay. Mark, what's that total again?
Sixty-four two eighty. Sixty-four three eighty.
Sixty-four three eighty on the head?
Sixty-four. Correct, for both.
Yep, three eighty. All right, can I have a motion to replace the Vernon Hills carpet as presented?
So moved?
Finish, go ahead, finish your motion.
Okay, sorry.
For a motion, can I have a motion to approve the Vernon Hills carpet replacement for a total of sixty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, please?
Why don't you name the vendor, too?
Uh, as presented. If I say as presented, it should be in the material, so.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, so moved?
Thank you. Thank you. Carol, you want to call it?
Eric Essel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody.
Hi.
All right, thank you for that. We're moving on to the Libertyville weight room replacement flooring. This was also talked about at the committee meeting. I believe we're going with the option, what was option one and option two?
Option. We're going with option number one, the base price sixty-five thousand eight-ten. And then option two with the color choice, orange number one oh six, uh, for additional four thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Total project cost to replace, uh, and install brand-new flooring through the whole area. This is part of, you know, the room, the room's gonna be expanded as part of demos, uh, this summer. Uh, total project cost seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Total project cost seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. This is, this is done to Tarkett Sports and it's a source wall contract number zero six zero five one eight.
All right. Questions of Mark regarding the replacement of the weight room flooring at Libertyville High School? As seeing them have a motion to approve the replacement of the weight room flooring as presented by Mark for a total not to exceed seventy thousand, one thirty-one. A move?
Second.
Thank you. Want to call it?
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
All right. Moving on to the tennis court reconstruction. I think Prentice, we talked about this as well at the last meeting. Prentice also sent us some further follow up regarding positive variance compared to what was expected. Any questions on Mark regarding this because it is a significant dollar amount?
I don't think I saw the communication about the variance. Could you just briefly explain that?
Yeah, Mark and Dan, why don't you explain how the bid? Mark, why don't you explain how the bids came in?
Originally, we had estimated about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the project through our engineer. We had, we received three bids. We had six, six contractors show up for the, for the mandatory pre-bid. We received three bids. Lowest bid being four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Highest bid being four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight. The job entails, since we have a bad, bad base at underneath the tennis courts. So it involves removing the, the asphalt, the thin layer of base that is presently, we'll put a twelve inch base in and then five inches of asphalt. New posts for the tennis courts, so new, all that will be subgrade poured in concrete. We're also replacing the fence all the way around. About a third of the fence poles are being replaced. There's also two manholes that are caving in on the tennis courts at the far east end. Those have to be rebuilt. So it is, is a very intense, extensive project. We were, we were very happy with the favorable bids, so we would recommend we move forward the project for four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars.
The faulty base, that is that not actionable?
Back in, the, the district replaced, they did a grind and resurfaced back in two thousand twelve. And in year five, we had major failure starting of the, because of the inferior subbase. If we were to try to do that, that way again without fixing the manholes and doing whatever fence repairs and that, we need one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars for that. So for about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more, we are actually putting in a proper base and the expected life of, of the course would be twenty years compared to five to eight for a resurface like was done in the past.
That makes sense. And I'm sorry if I missed this in committee, but in two thousand twelve, the contractor that we used that recommended the base that turned out to be faulty, that, that's not an actionable item?
It was, it was not, the contractor was just hired to grind off the surface and put a fabric down, you know, to try to extend the life. But because the bases is in such bad condition, we did coring samples. We actually went and drilled and looked to see what the, what the actual base was and the asphalt below. And is, it is deteriorated enough that if we were to, just to do another overlay, expected life again would be five to, five to eight years. In my opinion, not financially responsible, you know.
Right.
Lisa, to, Lisa, to your question, the base was not addressed in two thousand twelve. So the work that was done, we had no base work done. We didn't do the whole rebuild back then. So that's part of the reason for the failure.
Yeah, so Lisa, what I, what I did, Lisa, was knowing and saw, you know, our life expectancy be that we had over five thousand feet of cracking on those tennis courts.
Right.
So that's what I did, you know, investigated and hired and had soaring, soil boring stone on the tennis courts to see what was the root cause of the failure. Because we weren't getting the full life that we, we should have out of the, the project that was done in two thousand.
Got it. And I'm sure you explained that in committee. I'm sorry to revisit that. I just, with the dollar amount, I just wanted to be sure I understood. Thank you.
That's actually a good question. There's, go ahead.
There is also a fifty thousand dollar contingency built in that if we do not need, if we do not any, run into any unforeseen bad sub soils that we are unaware of, the project will cost fifty thousand dollars less. If we, you know, it's there to, just in case we need it. If we don't, then it will be credited back off the, the contract price.
For those of you that were with us through the Libertyville flood, hey, we know we have some active streams running under that area. So we're, you know, we're not, we're never sure. And that's why the contingency is at fifty thousand dollars on this project. In case we run into a problem below the court. One additional thing here that I think we talked to Kevin a little bit about in committee, but we've talked about a little before, for those of you that, you know, may be on the board in the future, when the district is successful sometime in the future at obtaining the blue house, which is next to the nursery property. Part of the original thinking about using that property across the street was actually configuring tennis courts and then keeping obviously some of the green space on the, on the old nursery property. So we could bring those courts up to a, you know, a, a more normal high school number in terms of courts. And then one of the other possibilities is to use the current tennis space for some additional parking. So having that extended base under, let's say we get the blue house in ten years and then the board wanted to start moving towards putting that next plan into place, then we could pull the posts out and reconfigure that for parking area. The only thing we'd have to do is put some kind of swale there at that point, you know, which we'll figure out how to do if, if we get there. And again, we all know with the blue house, that's sometime down the way probably, but they will also allow us just to kind of transfer that almost automatically, automatically to parking in the tennis court area and give us a few more spaces over at the athletic side of the building, the athletic fields.
All right, other commentaries on the rebuild of the LHS tennis court reconstruction? No, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the base bed for four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven seventy-one to be awarded to Evans and Son Blacktop for that rebuild as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Carol?
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
All right, moving on to LHS flooring installation. This is the replacement of the flooring that's getting, because of the asbestos, yes?
Yes, correct.
Do we talk about this one already?
Yes, I was, I, my bids came in, was last Thursday, I believe the day was. So we did talk about it at FNF. We came in under budget. The lowest bid was Libertyville Tile. And the project cost for one hundred and nineteen thousand and fifty dollars. And part of that is a fifteen thousand dollar contingency allowance. We had six, we had five contractors at the pre-bid. We received five bids and Libertyville Tile was the winning bidder.
All right, Mark, I do have a question on this one. They were the winning bidder by a substantial amount. Should we be concerned about that? I think by over twenty percent, I think.
Libertyville Tile has been doing a substantial amount of our work over the years. They're based in town. I did call the owner. We did get a letter and, and I asked him if he had his contingency amount in and he said, yes, he did. He said, Mark, I need to protect my turf. You know, he's a taxpayer in town and I said, he's working, he's doing the, all the work at, the construction work at, at Vernon Hills. He's done the, especially for, except for especially floors, is doing the work at Libertyville. He did the, the majority of the tile in the pool, pool area. So, and he's done like several of our major projects, you know, with flooring throughout the years.
And this wasn't the pool issue. This wasn't a tile, tile issue we had at the pool, though. That was my second question.
Pardon me?
That was this, that was this contractor, yeah.
That was this contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're, I'm, I mean, we've talked, we're not concerned about their ability to perform this.
Yeah, and he's, he's come back for all the repairs, right? So.
Yes, he has.
That was, that's got, that had to cost him a lot of money.
Yeah, no, same as behind his works. Okay, other questions, Mark? None, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the bid for, for the flooring installation of Libertyville High School for one hundred and nineteen thousand, zero fifty to Libertyville Tile as presented? Anybody, second?
I'll second.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, Carol, you got those? Motion second?
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
All right, the next bid is for the east parking lot at Vernon Hills High School. Again, this was discussed at FNF, I believe. Mark, anything to add?
Don't the, we put the bid package together, also did soil samples, soil borings out there, did the engineering. Manaville Construction was the lowest bidder for their base bid of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and we did not accept alternate number one. So, so we're asking to award the project to Manaville Construction for two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And what was alternate one?
Alternate one was to remove gravel, temporary gravel parking lot on American Hotel property. Their, their price was, we thought was substantially higher than, than we could get a better, better pricing on it.
And for us, it's a, even doing the work is an unknown at this point and so we can in good faith go forward with the alternate as it is. So that's something we'll have to consider in the future.
Okay. Questions regarding the replacement of the east parking lot for Mark? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to approve the east parking lot work at Vernon Hills High School awarded to Man, Manaville, is that how you say, construction company for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as presented? So moved.
So moved.
Great, can I have a second, please?
Seconds.
Carol?
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
You're muted, Katie. Thank you, Lisa.
Hi.
All right. Now we're going to talk about doing some painting of the pool, I think, over Vernon Hills. We haven't talked about this one, have we?
Yes, we did. I, I, I received my bids for this on Thursday. For the Vernon Hills repainting the pool vessel at Vernon Hills High School. We had seven contractors for our pre-bid meeting. We received four bids. We bid it in two, two ways. Bid number one was for a one coat epoxy product made by Olympic Paint. The second bid was a two coat application, again, made by Olympic Paint. In two thousand fourteen, we had repainted the pool, so we are due for maintenance on it. And in two thousand fourteen, we chose the two coat paint for additional seven thousand plus, between seven and eight thousand dollars, a second coat. It proved to be very durable and hold up very well over the, over the years. So I'm recommending that we, we go with bid number two for the two coat system for thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
The contractor is Cosgrove Construction and they are actually the painters on our project at Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School.
And what's the expected lifetime of that then, Mark?
Expected lifetime for maintenance is between five and seven years. We're, we're year six right now.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Mark, on the painting of the Vernon Hills pool? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the indoor pool vessel painting of Vernon Hills High School by Cosgrove Construction in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars as presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Carol?
Michael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
All right, that's awesome. Next item on our agenda is the reimbursement, a remote learning reimbursement. I'm going to turn this over to Prentice.
Okay, thanks.
Can I, can I just clarify one thing first? On the agenda, these bids are all, they're formatted two different ways. A and B, if I recall, we discussed in committee, the project and the bid award, is that correct? And then item C, these were all new bid awards? Is that the difference, the way they're listed on the agenda?
Yeah, that, that's why I kind of asked in terms of, I couldn't remember, my memory's bad.
I just want to make sure for the public because they're just formatted differently and I just wanted to make sure, is there a reason why they're formatted differently? I don't know if I got it right or not.
Between, so the biggest difference is, you're talking between A and B and then C?
Well, A, B, and C were all basically bid awards. The motions were all to award the bids.
So the, one is the difference is, A and B were both, were both under, basically nationally bid already contracts, the already were bid. The C is the ones that we bid ourselves, really.
Okay.
That, that's what I would say is the difference. Those are the ones that we literally put out bids to ourselves. A and B were ones that we use national, national, nationally bid purchase contracts for.
Okay, I just want to make sure that anybody, if they saw the recording, can understand the difference.
That's good catch.
Okay. Exactly.
Okay. Good, Kevin, to go?
Yep, go ahead, Prentice.
Okay, so at the direction and will of the board in our last meeting, the board discussed a reimbursement for staff that have been involved in the remote learning process. The board asked us to go back and take a look at our staff who are working full time under the new reality. And the team did that, you know, several times, reviewed that list, John and Tom, then us at the district office, and we went through that process, you know, at least a couple of times. So the dollar amount the board set was two hundred and fifty dollars per person. And again, that is to reimburse for any costs associated with. Uh, and again, that is to reimburse for any costs associated with, uh, e or remote learning, uh, moving forward. So, I just want to read the breakdown of how this will be awarded, and then, uh, what the estimated total was and what the actual total was. Uh, I want to give Dan, uh, thanks, and, uh, Brian, thanks for really, uh, working on this list, and then Dan putting the numbers, uh, together. Under the teacher category, uh, we'll be reimbursing two hundred and seventy-nine teachers. There are two hundred and eighty-four teachers in total. Uh, ESP staff will be reimbursing ninety-four staff members, one hundred and sixty-three in total. And, uh, ESP is support staff, um, sorry, uh, for, uh, not describing the vernacular. And on the administration side, uh, there, uh, will be thirty-nine administrators receiving the reimbursement, and there are forty-two total, um, administrators. So, uh, in total, that's four hundred and twelve, uh, employees out of four hundred and eighty-nine who will be receiving the reimbursement at two fifty. Uh, so, um, the actual total reflects part-time adjustments and retiree caps is, uh, one hundred and one, eight hundred, one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Can you repeat that amount? I'm sorry, a hundred and one thousand?
It's one hundred one, eight, one, five, and ninety-nine cents in total. Okay?
Can I ask, um, there's thirty-nine of forty-two administrators who are deemed eligible. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I, I can't, um, so, it's really administrators and even the teachers that are listed in the not getting it. The reason a teacher would not get it is, one, they're on, um, FMLA leave for the whole year, so they're not teaching, so they're not eligible. Or the, you have a, or, and the second answer would, would answer for both why a teacher or administrator may not be able to get it, is because they're on the retirement check, and they are already at their cap. They cannot get paid anymore than, than what they're already get, scheduled to get paid essentially, so.
That makes sense.
That's why there are five no, and that's why we have three admin that are no. And there's a difference between the hundred and three estimate, if you took all four hundred and twelve that are on the yes list, times two hundred and fifty, that's a hundred and three thousand. We have to prorate some of them because some people will hit their cap, so, uh, while we may think they, they are eligible for that reimbursement, we can't pay them the whole thing because that will then hit their cap, so we have to reduce that. And then we also have a, we have, we also have at least one, maybe more, uh, that is a part-time person, and so they're, they're getting, they're getting prorated, uh, two fifty, so, you know, they're going to get one twenty-five instead of the two fifty, so.
So, four, four hundred and eighty-nine total employees, four hundred and twelve will be receiving, uh, the reimbursement that are, are working toward, uh, remote learning. And, uh, I'll just note for the record, as we do, uh, with, when, uh, the staffers at performance recognition bonus, that I will not be receiving, uh, the bonus as part of that, or, uh, the reimbursement, uh, as, uh, as, um, we do with the performance recognition bonus as well, okay? So, um, again, the number is one hundred one, eight, one, five, ninety-nine, and I would ask the board to, um, approve that recommendation.
Can I, can I ask one question first? Is there anything else we could do for the, uh, people in the retirement track that wouldn't get us in trouble with the salary cap?
We can reimburse their actual incurred expenses.
Right, yeah, they could submit.
So they'd have to submit receipts, and then we can reimburse. So this is essentially as, you could view this as, this is an unsubstantiated reimbursement, which, why we have to pay it through payroll.
Okay, but we could at least do that. If someone says, hey, I had to upgrade my internet or something like that, we're, we're, we're going to make sure we do that, right? Okay.
All right, other questions, Prentice?
Sure, Cap.
No, anybody else have anything to press? I've not. Yeah, let's get that motion to approve a cost of a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents to reimburse our staff as presented by Prentice this evening. So moved. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, let me, just one, one other point of discussion. Can we overrule Prentice on his la, last part of his decision?
No. No, you can't. Thank you, though. I appreciate the thought. That means more to me, Pat, than the two hundred and fifty, so thank you.
Okay, because I would, I would have been more than willing to vote aye on that, just because I know how much time you put in. But if that, if you're more, if you're more comfortable with that, I'm not going to push it.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the thought.
I figured, he's always been, I know he's always been pretty good about, very good about this, I mean, okay.
We do, and I acknowledge that you have gone far and above beyond.
There's been a lot of email, very strange hours in the morning, weird days.
And certainly you have mu, many reimbursable expenses that you certainly should be reimbursed for.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate the thought, and we're only as good as the team, and so when I'm writing you those crazy messages, it's because the leadership team has been with me into the hours right before that, and then I'm doing the wrap-up with you, so that's just the way it works. So, thank you very much, and, uh, we appreciate your, your thoughts, and I, on behalf of this, the whole staff, of you thinking about them during this challenging time and the expenses that they make, incur to make this happen. So, uh, Dan, I think you brought this up first, and we had some real healthy discussions, and, um, so it's a good thing. Thank you.
So what's the ti, what's the timing of this, uh, Dan?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add, so, so the board approves it tonight, tomorrow. Rhonda has this ready to go, um, so it's been a bit of a whirlwind. Um, and by the way, this is not a perfect list, right? We, there might be mistakes in here, uh, but we think that we've all done our best to try to get an accurate list. Uh, so Rhonda has this in, ready to go tomorrow. I'll text her as soon as I'm done with this meeting and say it was approved. She'll send this to the bank tomorrow. She has to process it and then send it to the bank, and it'll hit, it'll hit people's accounts on Thursday. So there's a, kind of a two-day delay between when we send it to the bank and when it'll hit, so this will.
Which is our, which is our April paid, our end-of-the-month April payday too, so.
And what is, what is?
It'll be treated as a separate pay.
What's the communication plan on it? In other words, people aren't going to open their page, I can go, hmm, I wonder what this is.
We will, we'll put something out in advance and app, Pat.
Okay.
And what are we calling this? What's the official name that we're calling this?
We're remote learning reimbursement.
Yeah, remote learning reimbursement.
Thank you.
I think we still need a roll call, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, this is a discussion of the motion. Okay, uh, back to the roll call, then. Sorry, Kim.
Nope, okay, Carol.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hassel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda is disposal of IT equipment. I believe, Prentice, this might relate to, uh, our assistance of another district, perhaps?
Yes, 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 Kevin, it, it does. As the board is aware, um, we, we reached out to one of our area districts, uh, to see if, uh, we could assist in any way as they tried to make the pivot to remote learning. Uh, the district is North Chicago One, uh, District one eighty-seven. Uh, John Price, the superintendent there, was, was very receptive to our initial inquiry, uh, and after some conversation, uh, on their end, they came back to us and said, uh, that they could be, they would need some assistance, uh, if we could provide it with, uh, used devices. As, uh, the board remembers, and, uh, the public may remember as well, about five years ago, we did our first rollout of our one-to-one devices. We chose Chromebooks at the time because of their flexibility, uh, multiple screen use, um, on there, and, um, we had, uh, approximately three hundred, uh, working first-generation, five-to-six-year-old Chromebooks, um, that, uh, we had in the district. Um, we, um, offered those to, uh, North Chicago, uh, and, uh, John, uh, was ecstatic to accept those, uh, on behalf of, um, trying to fulfill their need in getting devices in students' hands, uh, to be able to make that pivot to e-learning. So I want to underscore again how appreciative John was on behalf of, uh, District one eighty-seven, uh, and also how honored we are to, uh, have the opportunity to assist, uh, fellow school district, um, in, um, fulfilling a need that they had. So, um, the, um, units were picked up by North Chicago on Friday, so for the moment, they're on loan, uh, because, uh, we can't dispose of them until you actually take action. So, uh, if you take action and vote in favor of this tonight, uh, then they will become, uh, disposed equipment. As you recall, when we've had other IT equipment over the years, and Don, I think, when you came on the board, you raised this question, and Mick Torres, our direct, uh, technology director, works with, uh, uh, a third-party agency, uh, that will collect, uh, and then distribute, um, um, but, you know, IT products. So, this is simply, um, you know, a neighborhood version, uh, of that, and will go to good use at North Chicago. We are so happy to be able to help them.
Just a point of order is similar that we do to other, other stuff, so like classroom furniture, you, you've seen, you know, the, the process for the board is, we need the board to approve that as a disposal, and then with our typical process, we always look for, is there, uh, a place that we can donate this to, or can you sell it? And then the last thing would be scrapping it, so this, this is following our regular course of order.
Nope, sounds good. All right, can I have a motion out there to dispose of the IT equipment as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Right. Carol?
Uh, Hassel? Huber?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael? Grudy?
Aye.
All right. Yeah, no, that's, that's fantastic stuff. Other, anything else for the Finance and Facilities Committee?
I have one little thing, um, just something that came up in a, in a conversation here in Libertyville. Tom, I guess we're, um, pulling apart some of the science labs, is that correct? Some folks were asking about the stovestone tops that were in the, um, the dumpsters, and whether the district had thought about donating those anywhere. So before I jump into that conversation, I thought I should just check and see what's going on with them.
Um, well, just from my perspective, and perhaps, um, Mark would have a different one. I was not involved in any discussions about, uh, donating any of that, but, um, I think it was because, um, for us, that removal, at least from my perspective, I thought all of this stuff would be damaged or destroyed in the removal process, because it was all bolted down to the floor and everything, and kind of tied in with the floors, but, um, perhaps Mark would have a better perspective.
I know, Tom, Tom is correct, as far as, uh, you know, they're actually fast in the cabinets. So when the cabinets themselves were removed and electricity holes drilled and things, um, we thought there would be, be damage in that. There are some other tops that are in tables that we are looking to see if we can find somebody that can use them, uh, but it's stuff that's in the dumpster so far. We considered it wasn't, wasn't reusable, uh, as far as to donate it to another school or something for use.
I appreciate that. I, I had assumed that was going to be the answer, but I, I felt like, because the public was asking that, we should just do a brief discussion of it, so thank you.
Yeah, definitely. We want to, from LHS, you know, we'll, we want to donate anything that we can to whoever needs it. We have just started the science labs. This was only two rooms, um, and we're going to gradually be replacing, uh, all of them over the next couple of years, um, in a phase-in process, so it's certainly something we can look at for future, uh, demolition that we do.
Great, thank you. That's it.
And just one other quick question to Dan. Dan, we talked a lot about the property tax levy in committee on, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, I believe there's an update from Lake County, is it? Based on what I read, that they're not going to delay property taxes?
Uh, that was the update at the time. Um, I think there, there are active discussions on trying to figure out if there's something they can do.
So, I see Vernon Township's going to, going to allow you to be late, uh, but Libertyville Township, I thought, no.
I don't, the township doesn't have.
It doesn't matter, yeah, it doesn't matter.
They don't have control over that, that's a county thing. Um, so I, I think discussions are continuing to happen. I don't think it is set either way, that nothing is happening, or that something is happening, to be honest, so.
Okay, thank you.
Pat, that was our committee that made a recommendation that they reported on in the media.
Okay.
And part of that recommendation is that they wanted to remain open to any possibility, any other possibility, so I think Dan's correct. I think we don't know yet.
So still open, okay. If, if I thought it was, if I thought it was not an issue anymore, I would tell you.
Okay.
It's not what I can tell you yet.
Okay, thank you. Um, is that it? Mr. Huber?
Yep.
Uh, Seadoll, Karen?
Yeah, just, just real quick, uh, Seadoll's continuing to try to meet the needs of their students as best they can. Particularly, you know, challenging for Seadoll during this time, but they're adapting their instruction to serve the students, social work, et cetera. Um, so that's, that's that, and also they are having, uh, virtual budget meetings this week, so I'll be attending one on Wednesday night to hear about the Seadoll budget proposal.
Good. That must be especially challenging for them to implement the virtual learning. Who?
Very challenging when you go through every category of students, and, yeah, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, nothing from IASB, so are there any other comments or questions?
There we go, quick comment.
I was going to say, it looked like there was something there, but I couldn't hear it.
They had a, a webinar this evening about, uh, seven questions that school boards should consider, uh, going forward, uh, concerning finance, um,
Who was, who was they, Don?
The IASB.
Okay.
So at six o'clock, I joined a session, a Zoom session, uh, where, uh, two of the ISB members discussed finances, uh, and the seven questions that we should consider. And, uh, I'm glad to say that, uh, our business manager had addressed in our last meeting most of the questions that they brought up. So, Dan, I'm happy to tell you that I don't have a lot of questions for you that you haven't already discussed with us. You are ahead of the curve, uh, based on what I heard at that meeting tonight. Um, so kudos to you. Thank you for keeping us informed, and thank you. Thank you for thinking of the questions before I knew to ask them.
Now I'm super curious, like, what questions did we miss?
Yeah, what, or is?
Well, the obvious one is, how's your fiscal year twenty budget going to be, uh, affected? Um, what are the assumptions that you're making for twenty twenty-one? And for most of that conversation, it was looking at the tier-one, tier-two schools, uh, because the tier-three and tier-four schools are most likely not going to get their funding. That there's a, uh, five-point-eight billion-dollar shortfall in the next fiscal year budget, and probably a three-billion-dollar shortfall in the year after that. The expenses, things that we, uh, the assumptions that you're making for expenses like salaries and health insurance and contracted services, those are all going to be affected. How's our cash flow? You talked quite a bit about our cash flow, and then what to do about cash flow problems. Do we need to liquidate investments? Is there a way that we could ask banks for a line of credit or tax anticipation warrants? You mentioned that. You talked about where our cash flow is, uh, and, um, where money is sitting right now that we could access if we need to, holding off on investments, you mentioned. The, the question that they asked that we, that I don't think we've answered yet, is how are we communicating to the public what, what we see coming up? Um, and right now, that's, you know, we're having these meetings. So if the public is interested, they would see either of the last two meetings, they would, uh, would have heard many of the answers, but.
Yeah, and, and some of those meetings just haven't really happened yet. And, yeah, so, yeah.
So, kudos.
Good, thanks, Dan, and good job, Don. Okay, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great job. Good night, everybody. Thanks again for all your.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Night, everyone.
See you later.
A record, almost.
Almost.